Good evening. My name is Jean Harrison. Welcome to our May 1st Jackson Public School Board Meeting of the Trustees. Ms. Lakita Marshall-Thomas will introduce the young man who will deliver the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good afternoon, Dr. Harrison, Board of Trustees, Dr. Murray. Cadet Sebion Thomas has distinguished himself as an established leader in JRTC. Sebion is a four-year cadet and a graduating senior at Provine High School. He is the proud son of Jessica Anderson and Sebion Thomas. In the spirit of striving for academic excellence as an outstanding R.A.M., Sebion is a very precocious student and scored 25 on his last ACT. Over the course of his four years at Provine, Sebion has received numerous awards and recognitions for his academic and leadership abilities. His various awards include being the recipient of the Top Leadership Education Training Award as a junior cadet, and for scoring advanced on the Biology I and U.S. History tests, and proficient for Algebra I and English II tests. Currently, he serves as the Senior Army Instructor Assistant to Major Daniel McGee. Besides being a leader, he has been a valuable member of various extracurricular activities, which include the tennis team, the 650 Club, the JRTC Color Guard, and the JRTC Drill Team. In addition to striving for academic excellence and providing leadership, Sebion has been involved in various community activities such as working with Stupot Community Services and helping needy citizens within our city of Jackson. Stop Hunger Now, Nissan Family Day, and the State's Game Mississippi Wheelchair Fencing Tournament. Upon graduating from high school, Sebion intends to attend college and pursue a degree in psychology.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you would join, we view standing to join me in reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Sebion. Please stay for a photo. Thank you so much. You represent our district well, young man. Thank you for joining us. Our moment of inspiration will be delivered by Chaplain Frankie Delois Bell. Chaplain Bell, will you join us? Is a licensed and ordained minister and holds a Doctor of Divinity as well. She is a board-certified chaplain and a certified grief counselor. She is currently employed at Mississippi Baptist Health Systems as a staff chaplain. Chaplain Bell is passionate about caring for people, which led her to seek chaplaincy as a way to share her love of God. She enjoys music and reading and sharing time with her family. Delois and her husband Larry have four children and five grandchildren. Thank you for joining us, Chaplain Bell.
Thank you. I thank you, Ms. Williams, for inviting me. I kind of an honor to bring a few words of encouragement to you. Thank you, Dr. Murray, Dr. Middleton, the board members, the faculty, community, and our fine students. I'm going to talk a little bit about a unified effort. Luke Chapter 5 tells of a man that was paralyzed but wanted to be healed by Jesus. The Bible says that the man was carried by four friends that tried to bring him through a large crowd, a crowd that also wanted to be healed. These four friends of the paralytic climbed on the roof, tore a hole in it, got some rope, lowered their friend in front of Jesus. Jesus, of course, seeing their faith and their ingenuity, healed the man. Faith and what we do can accomplish great goal. In the view of obstacles, when we view obstacles that lay before us, let's see them as a challenge that can be overcome, and then we'll go on to have greatness and success. The goal of the four men were to get their friend to Jesus, and they accomplished their goal because they had the same thing in mind. They looked at the situation, assessed the crowd, and saw what was available to them. No doubt, the men worked as a team and devised a plan and carried it out. My words of encouragement to you today are to let nothing stop you because nothing is impossible to you. If you unify in your beliefs, mission, goal, and vision, you will achieve success. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you for joining us. That was wonderful. We definitely appreciate your words of wisdom and encouragement. Thank you. Let the record show that we have a quorum. All members of the board are present. And we have before us board members the agenda. We've had time to review it. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda as printed, or are there revisions or additions?
That's so moved.
It's been moved. Second? It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as printed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is accepted. Item four, reading and approving minutes. I recommend we collapse them, A and B. The minutes have been distributed earlier and been made available. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as printed and distributed by Ms. Williams?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we have approved the minutes as read and approved as distributed. Item five, Ms. Turner, do we have persons available for public participation?
You do actually, but the person would like to address you about a personnel matter, so I've advised him we need to do it in executive session, and I would ask that you take him up then. It's Mr. Corey Stringefellow. I think y'all have received some correspondence about him.
Does that need a motion to approve? Thank you.
Well, not until you get ready to go.
Right, until we go into session. Thank you. Item six, the superintendent's reports, the cap update.
Good evening, Board President, Board Members, community. We have one item tonight, and that's, of course, a cap update. Dr. Merritt, bring the cap update.
Good evening to Dr. Harrison, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Murray. Just to give you an update regarding our cap, we are moving forward in a progressive manner and addressing the standards. All things instructional, we will request MDE to come out and monitor this month, of course, before school ends. Everything, for the most part, is looking extremely well. There are some standards that we do have some concern about, and it has been noted in the material that has been submitted to you. We will complete the request to MDE following our principal's meeting. In your material, we had tentatively scheduled it for Monday, the 7th, but we moved it to the 9th. And once we're able to cover several standards, namely, Standard 20, the Instructional Management Systems, Standard 20.1, or 2, pardon me, which is the Multi-Tierred Support System, Standard 11, which is the Dropout Prevention Plan, and we received TA on last week for Standards 22, which is Alternative Ed, and Standard 32, which is the Youth Detention Center. We feel comfortable, based on the TA received, that we are moving in a progressive manner. Ms. Kirsch, who provided the TA with the Youth Detention Center, they are also monitored by a federal entity, and it was a positive report from their monitoring. And so there are some things that we need to do, but nothing major. And so she's very complimentary of the leadership and everything that's been taking place as we work collaboratively with them. I did talk with Mr. Stamps, who is my contact for the district in the Office of Accreditation this afternoon. He did give me a call and informed me that they did do some walkthroughs for Standard 30 facilities, and for the most part, things were looking good. And, you know, they'll provide a written report on where we are as it relates to clearing those standards. With Standard, I was also pleased to inform you that the kindergarten guideline, Standard 17.1, will be reviewed. And MDE did reach out to the district for a principal and a teacher to help review those guidelines. And it's always good to be at the table for things of that nature so that we can be upfront, be ahead of the game with the implementation. So other than that, all things are going well. Again, I feel comfortable with the implementation based on the internal monitoring procedures and the information I have seen with the majority of the standards. But the ones that are noted in your material, those are the ones that we have concern about.
Point of clarification, Dr. Merritt. In the materials, did you, is that an updated timeline? But I'm just trying to get a sense of from where we were in January, and we had target dates. I get the sense that we are reaching those target dates for at least starting the initiation and going through the process. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, and somewhat. We've adjusted some, maybe a month or two, just to make sure that we have adequate implementation. With some standards, it requires the coordination of other standard leaders. And so in order to ensure that, we had to push some back so that when we, in partnering with MDE, we would just, if they can do several things at one time, that's what we want to do to, for time's sake. And so we're working in that manner.
Thank you. That was my sense of reading the materials, but I wanted to be sure that there was nothing that you needed our immediate attention over.
No, ma'am.
Other questions or comments from the board?
I have a couple of questions. I'm just understanding the materials. So standards for finance, professional development, child nutrition, library, transportation, and facilities, we have requested that those be cleared. Is that correct?
Right. They have, for most of those standards that you named, they have come and monitored the standards. We're just waiting for the program office. And Mr. Stamps said the program office will inform him if they're cleared or if they need additional information, and in turn, he will inform us, provide a written report notating that information.
And on the question regarding the gifted in high school, what's our plan to make progress on those?
We are working. Dr. Murray and I have been talking daily about it, about how to effectively and proactively address that standard in the future, or currently really, as well as in the future. I think we, I know we have a plan in place moving forward and to self-correct those challenges that we have.
Because there are some issues that exist that are, you know, that go back a few years. And we have to, again, self-correct and ensure that we have a plan in place. So we're making sure that we are requesting a technical assistance so we can clear those standards.
MDE is working with us on those?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Merritt.
Thank you.
That concludes superintendent's report.
Information items only, Priority and Focus School update. From our, is Dr. Merritt going to read this? Let me just say that we appreciate our principals so much. And the board, too, has received wonderful technical assistance from MDE to help us craft a way to best hear from our principals in a timely manner. So we appreciate your willingness to come and give us lengthy reports. But since we do have your detailed written reports that you shared with us already, we've asked if the area superintendents would give the highlights of your work. Moving forward, the board, if we have questions, we'll be sure to have them ahead of time. We might have maybe one or two questions in this abbreviated presentation, but we're really trying to do our best to give everybody the best opportunity to do their best work. And to our constituents, our community, part of this work is that, one of the reasons that we ask and MDE expects that we share this information at our board meetings is so that the community will continue to be informed. So the district will let us know how you can access the particular reports of each school. So if you're interested in the progress of your particular school, we'll have that. So what you're hearing tonight, we have principals here to join us and comment, and then Dr. Murray and the area superintendents will move us along in an expeditious manner. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So tonight, we will hear from the Priority and Focus Schools. And we have a 60-minute update, and the assistant superintendent's.
60 minutes?
What did I say, 60 seconds?
60 seconds. Thank you, Dr. Merritt.
And we do appreciate your support, Dr. Harrison, along, as well as the board with this process. I am standing for Mr. Hannah for Area 3 this evening as he's engaged in some other work activities. And so I will just ask the Area 3 principals if you would just come up front, please, so that people can identify your face and who you are. And I'm going to begin with Dr. Valerie Bradley from Boyd Elementary. And her significant update is that they were able to facilitate a state writing prompt, a test prep on a writing prompt in order to prepare students for the writing exam for math. And that is something that where students, if they write to the rubric, they can earn a quick 12 points. So that was her, Dr. Bradley's update.
Thank you. That sounds great. Thank you.
And next, we will have Dr. Mayers from Brinkley Middle School. She is celebrating that she finished her Saturday school, and she is now preparing for her summer bridge that will begin in July. And one thing that's significant about her summer bridge that will begin in July and end July 27th, instead of having summer school at the beginning, she's having it at the end of summer where students can transition into school with the needed skills in order to be successful, as well as she's almost achieved her one-to-one initiative with Chromebooks in her building.
Oh, very good.
Next principal.
Thank you so much for your work.
Is Mr. Harrison Michael from Chastain. And I'm not sure if I see him, but he is celebrating that they have had above the 95% participation rate in testing every day at his school, and that is something to be celebrated.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The next principal will be Mr. Marvin Davis from Galloway. And he will be, he's celebrating, of course, they have, he's in the Lanier Feeder pattern where they had the Saturday Academy, and he wants to make a notation that he will, he's also helping teachers better their skills this summer, who will be participating in a Making Connections Conference that's facilitated by MDE. And so he's happy to support teachers in those efforts. And then lastly, we have Lanier High School, Mr. McDonald. And he's just celebrating his partnership with, I believe it's UMC.
UMMC.
UMMC. And the EMT program that they will have in place there. With the exception of Mr. McDonald at Lanier, all of these schools did notate that they are receiving lead partner support, and that support is going well.
Thank you.
And that concludes the Area 3 report.
Area 3. Very good. Thank you so much for your work.
Good afternoon, Dr. Harrison, Board of Trustees, Dr. Murray, staff, and community members. I am Otha Belcher. I'm the assistant superintendent for Area 1. The schools tonight that I will provide information on are Timberlawn, Cardoza, Forest Hill, Sywell, and Van Winkle. We will begin with Timberlawn updates. They adjusted from the Benchmark 2 data for interventions of 3A and 3B students with incorporation of the small group instruction, which will help us in the long run. Cardoza, teachers attended a PD on MDE for writing, as Dr. Merritt said earlier, which will help us with the 12 points that we've been missing out on. Teachers are also receiving assistance from Green and Associates for 8th grade math. It's been a struggle at Cardoza all year with 8th grade math, so it's going to help us out. Forest Hill hosted a site council meeting to discuss state testing support, teacher recruitment, and structuring the APEC for next school year. So it's going full APEC at Forest Hill next year. Sywell, with the association of the Green Group, the school has seen tremendous growth in 7th and 8th grade ELA. So as you see a trend, we're getting the help, we're getting a little bit better. It just takes a little time. And with Van Winkle, with incorporation of the Bailey Group for three days in three subject areas of reading and math, they are getting a lot better. And as far as the Area 1, we had a big AR push this year, and we all closed out the AR. As a feeder, minus Forest Hill, we read 204,658,185 words, 79,604 books, with a comprehension rate of 72.05%. And that is the report for Area 1.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Belcher.
Hey, I'm going to report for Area 2, which includes Witten Middle School, Hardy Middle School, Peoples Middle School, and Wingfield High School. First, I'll start with Witten. Witten's staff and students attendance increased from last month. Also, Green Educational Services began services on April 18th for 20 days, working with 7th grade math teachers. And they also hosted Parent Academy Night for upcoming testing. At Hardy Middle School, April 20th, they inducted 39 students into the National Junior Honor Society. Also, April 5th, they had a math and ELA parent night with approximately 120 parents that attended. April 10th was their 8th grade transition night for upcoming 9th graders going over to the high schools. Green Educational Services also began working in Hardy with their 7th grade math teachers. Peoples Middle School currently hosts a boot camp, which has been instituted school-wide to address current skill gaps, deficiencies, reteaching of low master standards, and review of past standards to assist in ensuring that the students meet the school's set goals. Also, Bailey Educational Group is working in providing job-embedded professional development. At Wingfield, Wingfield is highlighting its Benchmark 2 assessment compared to our last Formative Assessment 6, with an overall average increase of 2 percentage points in ELA in math and 7 points in Biology and U.S. History. Also, Green Educational Services is providing targeted support in job-embedded professional development.
Great. Thank you. Dr. King.
Good evening, Dr. Murray, Dr. Harrison, board members. Excuse me, I bring you updates for Blackburn Middle School and Powell Middle School. At Blackburn, there are many things that are taking place, continuously take place. Of course, both schools are deeply engaged in the state testing right now. But they have almost met their goal of reading 100 million words. As of May 1st, the students have independently read 99.8 million words, so that is a celebration there. They continue to receive support from the Bailey Education Group in the areas of ELA and mathematics, and they have purchased more technology, specifically interactive boards and Chromebooks to support the technology, instructional technology. At Powell Middle School, Powell completed their after-school tutorial program with community partners such as the 100 Black Men and JSU ROTC. Also, they continue to receive support from the Green Education Services in the areas of mathematics 8th grade.
Thank you, Dr. King. Did all of our principals get a chance to stand and be recognized so our community and our parents can see you? Thank you all for your work. Thank you so much. And one piece, Dr. Murray, Dr. Merritt, regarding the template for the reports that we receive, if we could have those kind of standardized in some way, because it is difficult reading from one report to the next.
Yes, we will have a standard report. They had already been uploaded.
Sure.
We got the quest from.
Right, oh, you got that.
So we definitely took note of that, and we'll have that. And for the community, we will work with IT to make sure that we upload that for the community, and we put that information out there for the public, so.
Thank you so much.
The reports will be available to the public.
Thank you. I was just reminding you, let's not forget. Okay, that's very good. Where are we on our agenda? Okey-dokey. B, information only, administration location changes for school year 1819.
Good evening to Dr. Murray, Dr. Harrison, and members of the board. For information only, the administration presents location changes for the following administrators listed in board material for the 1819 school year.
Thank you. That information was distributed earlier. Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Do we have any discussion or comment, questions? Okey-dokey. Item C, revised start and end time change for the 2018-2019 school year for secondary schools, grade 6 through 12.
As Dr. Sargent comes, we've been working, as everyone knows, been very public, the issues we had this year with having to make up days. And so the board charged us with making sure that we put a mechanism in place so that wouldn't happen in the future, or we would have time built in. So we've worked on that, and it will necessitate a change in time for middle and high school. So Dr. Sargent will speak to that, that change. And then after tonight, we will make sure that we put this information out for the public so that they're familiar with the changes that will take place for next school year.
Good evening, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Merritt, School Board. Dr. Merritt's already introduced the schedule change, so at this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Griffith, our Director of Data Quality, to come up. She worked very closely with me as we worked on the schedule to kind of walk through the details of the adjustments that were made at the secondary level. And then, of course, we'd be glad to entertain any questions that you have about the new schedule.
Good afternoon, Dr. Murray, Dr. Harrison, and the board. As you know, we ran into several issues in December with our scheduling of our students to make sure that we could meet our instructional hours and still be able to award Carnegie units. So I was asked to come up with a plan by which, in the event that something else happened, we would not be forced to make up days, kind of in a rush. You know, we made up the last day in a rush, and parents were kind of caught off guard. So what we did, I looked at our instructional minutes that we take. Currently, we offer 94 instructional minutes per block. In order for us to get in more time, I've adjusted it to 100 minutes per block. Making that one slight adjustment every day will allow us for a half-unit course to meet that requirement at day 43 of the semester. So for example, we have an AB calendar, which means 90 days makes up a full year for a course for us. So for .5, at 43 days, we will have met the instructional requirement to award that Carnegie unit. For a full year. For a full-year course, at day eighty-six, we would have met that requirement for the awarding of the Carnegie unit. The procedure has twofold. We can make up and have enough time in the schedule, but we still may have to make up days, which means, for example, we looked at board policy A F A that gives the board the right, in the event that the governor declares a state of emergency, to not make the district make up the days. If we don't add, give the board that information or that right to state that, then we will still have to make up the days, but we can do it with the current inclement weather days that we already have built into the calendar. That would not have helped us during the water crisis, though, because it was not a state of emergency. It was a city emergency. But this plan going forward will allow us kind of two fluff days per semester in the event that something happens where our parents won't be caught off guard, the district won't be caught off guard, and our students will still get the instructional time, because that was the issue. Making sure that because of the cap and the audit, that we didn't get cited for awarding credits where we didn't have the instructional time. Any questions?
I do. It's part of my understanding of the situation we were in before, the board policy requires us to make up all days that were missed. Thus, the two days that the governor declared to be an emergency, we still had to make up.
Correct.
Does this change in the school day and what you're suggesting mean that we also need to address that in our policy?
Correct.
Yes. This addresses, we had to come back, and I think we stayed an extra day in December because the students had not met. We had to come back on that Friday. With this policy in play, or this time change, we would not have had to come back on that Friday. That day would have been built into the schedule.
Right.
So the students, we had to come back on that Friday because the students had not met the Carnegie unit requirement at the secondary level. This would keep that from happening in the future.
And one of the questions I posed, the response I got, said that this will allow the district to waive two instructional days in either semester. Is that two days each semester or two days total?
It's going to be, it'll be two days each semester because for that point five Carnegie unit. So it's like we're banking two days in the fall semester and banking two days in the spring. However, if we, if the board had the option to say that we're not going to make up those days, then we won't have to have hazardly make up days. So the sixty percent day wouldn't become a full day. The kids could have still gotten our sixty percent. And without barring the issues we ran into in the spring with the water crisis, we would have been able to say, you know, we can take, you know, make up just inclement weather days.
So we do need to consider policy changes, though, to go hand in hand with this.
Correct.
Is this change cost neutral?
Yeah, it won't cost anything else.
And have we had any parent input on the extension of the high school day?
No, we, other than putting out the surveys that Dr. Murray has done before and communicating the need for it, we haven't done any, gotten any parent input beyond that.
You distributed some surveys related to this?
Ma'am.
You distributed surveys related to this issue?
Yeah, that was a certain, when we put out the surveys about the make up days and instructional time, based on those responses, you know, we realized that parents don't like trying to take away the Easter or add days at the last minute. So that prompted Dr. Murray to give us the charge, you all give us the charge, to fix that instructional time so that we don't have to make up days that have not been designated in the calendar. One thing to keep in mind with this change, though, without making the policy recommendation change, if we don't do that and we miss days, we still have to be in school a hundred and eighty days. You know, so without the policy change, this change doesn't fix that requirement. It just makes sure that our kids have the instructional time that they need in order to get the Carnegie unit without having to add the instructional day within the semester that we missed it. The time that we've built in with the time that we've added gives us those two days. So in the event that we miss more than that, we may be back in the same boat. So, you know, the bottom line is the only way to add more time to the day is to put more time into the daily schedule. So if we say, okay, well, you all give us four days, that's going to put high schools getting out later than what we're recommending now. So to try to build more days in the calendar puts more school time within the individual day. So we're trying to balance the two to make sure that we were able to give some days and some time so if something happens, we don't have to make up at the day. But at the same time, try to make sure that our kids get out in enough time so it's not dark when they're getting home.
Can you speak to the actual times, the change?
The current schedule has middle school getting out at three oh five. With the revised schedule, they'll get out at three, the instruction ends at three twenty. So we've just moved some minutes around during the day, took some from transition between classes and in the morning. So we didn't extend the date, but by roughly fifteen minutes. High school currently gets out at three thirty, and with the proposed changes, they will get out at four o'clock. And that will add thirty minutes to their day. We took into account transition time, lunchtime, and the start time of school. So high school starts now at eight twenty-five, and instruction will start, the proposed instructional start time is eight forty. So the day kind of shifts. That's how it's cost neutral in terms of staffing right now. It's because we're shifting the whole day. If we were to go any, you know, extend it either way in any other direction, it would no longer be cost neutral. So four o'clock was kind of our cutoff in not being able to incur any more expense on the district.
How does this affect transportation?
Transportation has been involved in the conversation. They actually, it started with transportation because this was recommended last year as a, as a support piece for the late bus arrivals. They recommended that it was, we were, dismissals were too close, and so they asked us probably a year or so ago to make this change. So it helps transportation as well.
I have a question about the proposed start and end times for high school. It looks like the proposal would have high school starting fifteen, instruction beginning fifteen minutes later, instruction ending thirty minutes later. Is that because of transition time?
Yes, it allows for the buses in the morning. We had to take the bus drop off into consideration with middle school time shifting to eight twenty-five instead of eight oh five. So we took into account the bus routes, the start and end time, so everything shift, you know, is shifted down.
I, if I'm understanding what you've shared, and thank you so much for your work on this, I think a couple of times people say barring what happened this year, because we were out five days due to the water crisis.
Correct.
That's equally as likely to happen if we have harsh weather again or not.
Correct.
So am I misunderstanding, or do we have a plan for that?
Part of the plan also includes that the state allows the district, the board, to make a request. So when the, all the area districts experienced inclement weather, for example, we received a survey from M D E that gave, you know, districts the option to tell how they plan to make up the days and whether or not, for funding reasons, we should not have to make up those days. But because, again, we don't have a board policy that addresses that, we couldn't even use that option to say that it's a financial burden on the district to have to make up these, you know, extra days. So in the event, we can't, if we put more time in the calendar than what we have, if the day extends so long that we're going to run into issues with kids getting home after dark, staff payment issues, we've allotted for about as much time as we can in the traditional day to try to catch the what ifs. But this only works with the adjustment in policy.
Well, the board is considering policy revisions. Shouldn't these two go hand in hand? What's the timeline? Why does this have to be decided tonight?
I think you tabled it. That was the policy Ms. Shepherd and I presented you, so it's intended to work with that, if you want to have the staff.
Well, we need to have both of these back together and see what the timeline is when we need to make this decision. That would be helpful to me, unless... Because if we need to do the policy, I would, it's my thinking that we shouldn't do one without the other until we're sure they're aligned and fit. I'm not on the policy committee. Y'all may have been working on this already. I just need to know what's the plan so that I'd be.
We certainly, as a policy committee, are looking at it and addressing all of the policies at one time. It seems to me in this specific case, we just need to make sure that this policy is corrected before we start the next school year. So we have a little bit of time, not a lot, we have a little bit of time. But as a committee, we need to come forward with the policies and looking at revisions soon.
And we have a drafted policy that was sent prior to, right after the situation happened.
Right.
Was that policy not approved?
It was tabled.
It was tabled.
Ms. Turner and I present, Ms. Turner and I did the revisions to it to take care of the situation. And that was the meeting that, when we, when I presented all the policies, and so it was in that batch.
Right, I remember we had asked for a prioritizing what policies need to be addressed first. Have we done that? As.
Out of the grading policy, we haven't gotten any other, but we can, I mean, we can look at it.
Well, I know the policy committee is doing that, but we do need help from the district in terms of timelines. That's my concern. Do we need to do this right now, given?
I would like to recommend yes.
And why is that?
Because even though the policy goes hand in hand with the schedule, the schedule does have benefit without the policy, because it gives our children more instructional time and making sure that they meet those Carnegie unit hours. So even if the policy was off the table and for whatever reason it didn't get approved, it still resolves the issue of making sure we have the additional instructional time so that we don't have to make up an extra day in a semester that we did not designate an inclement weather day. Also, we're making preparation to set up for the new school year. And so there are some requirements for us to get information into E M S S so that we can start building schedules, building times.
That's what I'm asking you. So if we don't approve this tonight, you can't move forward, and we can't have school for next year.
Well, it won't be that bad, but it does kind of.
I'm sorry, Dr. Harrison and Dr. Sargent, Board members, and Dr. Murray. The item is not asking for approval. It's presented to the board, I believe, for information. Is that correct?
Well, when will it come up, or we don't have to approve it?
I don't think you have to approve it. It's just for information. I think Dr. Sargent is just trying to inform the community and the board and probably get it in the handbook.
Okay, so.
And inform the public. A big piece, yeah.
Now, the corollary issue of the board policy, we do need to get that moving and back on the table.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Well, it seems that since you got, they have this worked out, what the board would need, what we would need, the policy would need to do would be to structure the policy based on what they have presented here. Because, you know, we don't want to be in violation of M D E and all of that. And it seems that they have done what M D E requires. So the policy needs to be in line with what you all have done.
I want to make sure we, M D E didn't require us to do it, so I want to make sure that we make that clear. The State Department didn't give us any directive. We did it in response to what occurred within our own city.
Right, I mean, in terms of the requirement for.
The Carnegie unit hours.
The Carnegie unit requirement.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
In violation. We don't want to be in violation of that kind of thing.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And Dr. Sargent, I would say I'm glad that you have proactively considered this because one of the issues that we faced was the fact that we were aiming for just the bare minimum number of credit hours. And I think we, as a board, discussed the fact that we need to aim a little bit higher than that. So I'm grateful for y'all being proactive here.
Yeah.
Okey doke. Thank you so much. We appreciate your word. Information action items, consent agenda items, finance. Mr. George.
Dr. Member, Board members, Dr. Harrison. We are coming today to approve resolution of school libraries, universal services, E rate for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. We had this information distributed. Board, do we have any questions or comments?
Yes, could you just describe the plan for use of the E rate funds?
So for the twenty eighteen, nineteen, we're only filing category one, which is going to be doing the reimburse, or the payments for the internet and WAN services. We are not filing category two as we're still implementing portions of the project that we did pay for with the seventeen, eighteen dollars.
In category one, you said it's internet and WAN wide area network.
Correct. So we currently are paying for ten gigs to the internet. And each of our school locations have two gigs of connectivity between them. And the way that Hub and Spoke Topology has set up, all of that aggregates back to a forty gig connection.
So this is what we'll be funding next year during the next school.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Do you have a motion to approve the item?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the resolution for schools and libraries, universal services has been approved. Thank you, Mr. George. Item B, approval of accounts payable and activity fund. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Murray, members of the board. I present to you item B, approval of accounts payable and activity fund claims for April seventh through April twentieth of twenty eighteen.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. We received these items in advance and have had a chance to review them. Board members, do you have questions or comments? Hearing none, do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the board has approved accounts payable and activity fund for this period. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Moving on to item C.
Item C, Board members, is a request to approve the rental adjustment on sixteen section land for, between J P S and consolidated electrical distributors, and they are doing business as Cefco Electric, Inc.
Thank you for sharing this information, board. Do you have questions or comments?
Just for clarification, the, as I understand it, the readjustment occurs every eight years?
For this specific lease, there are different review periods for every lease. So it depends on the length of the lease. This one happens to be a forty-year lease, so it's reviewed every eight years.
And based on the appraisal, there's no change in the rent?
There's no change, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Board, do I hear a motion to approve the rental adjustment agreement?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the rental adjustment between J P S and Consolidated Electric has been approved. Ms. Miller, item D.
Item D, Board members, is the approval of bond council for the twenty eighteen general obligation bond issue. First of all, let me thank you for allowing me to remote in at the last board meeting. I appreciate it. But Board members, we did, as we spoke at the last board meeting, we do have another member of the finance team that is required for this transaction to occur, and that is bond council. So on April thirteenth, we issued a request for qualifications for bond council. It was advertised, and we had four responders, well, actually, five, there was a group that went together. And so this gave us a pool of responders that we could use and recommend for bond council. We used the basic R F Q that's outlined by the State of Mississippi Department of Finance and Administration's Bond Advisory Division and also conferred with Ms. Melinda Russell, who's the Assistant Director there, on setting this R F Q up as well as doing evaluation criteria and the requirements that were in the R F Q. So on April twenty-fourth, we did receive those responses, and the team scored the individual responses, the team consisting of, and I'll kind of do this as an introduction, Mr. Namdi Thompson with Governor Consultants, you approved him at the last board meeting as our financial advisor. He's in the audience today. Mr. Thompson was one of the reviewers, Attorney Shepherd, and myself. And so we actually looked at a number of things that we looked at as far as evaluations of the responses, and I believe I've sent that information to you, if not, I haven't.
You did, thank you. You did, thank you.
And so, we are recommending that Butler Snow be, service bond counsel for this issue. The principals are here with us tonight, two of them, Steve Eds and Attorney Sue Fairbank. And also Attorney Ashley Wicks had to leave. She had a prior engagement. We are proud to say Attorney Wicks is a Merri grad, so is Attorney Eds. And Attorney Wicks is also a graduate of Jackson State. So, we're very pleased to have her. Another member of the team will be Attorney Trey Hairston, who will be working with us as well. We feel very confident about the leadership that Butler Snow will provide on this issue. Of course, as we spoke, we have a tight window. And so, we need that experience so we can hit the ground running. Pending approval of this tonight, we've already got a meeting scheduled. I've already started having conversations and I anticipate weekly conferences with the finance team. Of course, the other responders, again, were Jackson firms. We forwarded, we forwarded all of those responses to the underwriters so that they can also be considered as underwriters' counsel. That is the other half of the attorneys that have to be included on this. So, we keep miss, kept missing each other today. But the underwriting firm has, we've talked actually prior to this, to know that they will be working with us and take some suggestions from the, from the board and also from the administration. So, the other firms that responded to the RFQ will also be considered for bond, I mean, for underwriters' counsel. So, we will have another group of local attorneys that will be a part of this finance team.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And as a member of the finance subcommittee with Ms. Hilliard and Dr. Sevak, we appreciate your keeping us updated, well-informed, lots of good information material through this process.
Thank you.
Questions or comments, board?
My only question is about the cost of issuance, which we agreed to last week. So, all of the professionals that are, will be hired, the underwriting council, the bond council, all get paid out of that two percent?
That's correct. And so, there's max. And so, there are other issues that if we go through the Mississippi Development, Mississippi Development Bank, there's a fee there. We'll have printing fees and fees associated with the OS and the POS and all of that. So, yes, everything will come out of the two percent. Once this team all gets structured, we will hammer out the exact dollars of fees and bring that back as information for the board. The goal is under the two percent because, of course, the less, the less cost we have on issuance, the more benefit to the district. So, that is my goal to not only get the seventy, but seventy plus as much as we can.
Absolutely, thank you.
Well, the comments, board?
Ms. Miller, in regards to this process, I appreciate you sharing the background, particularly the assistance that was provided by Department of Finance and Administration. It's my understanding that each of the proposals was scored independently off-site, meaning that y'all were not together when they were scored.
Yes, that's correct.
And then, you took the average of those scores.
That's correct.
Okay, and then, as far as underwriter counsel, is it, is my understanding correct that the underwriter will select from the other four?
Yes, we've, we've asked them to consider those. And yes, we will continue to have that conversation with them because we want them to make sure that we have a local presence and that we include counsel that is quality and capable of doing this work here in Jackson. So, absolutely, we missed each other today a couple of times, but yes, that's the case.
And thank you for reaching out. And I think as soon as, I would like to get some understanding of the criteria they'll use to select as well, just so there's a similar process where we have in place to select the firm that best fits the needs of our district.
Absolutely. I will make sure I follow up in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments, board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve bond council for the 2018 general obligation bond issue?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, this bond council has been approved. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Item ten A, Dr. Merritt, MOU between Strategic Education Research Partnership and JPS.
Yes, ma'am. The administrator recommends approval of the MOU with Strategic Education Research Partnership Institute, better known as SERP, and the Jackson Public School District. SERP will implement a culturally relevant reading intervention program in JPS middle schools for three years. And they are basically targeting students that are two to four years behind in reading, which is an issue in our middle schools. I do want to mention and notate that this is a partnership that the Mississippi Department of Education approached the district with. And we see it having value to our students in, in, in supporting them in literacy. What comes with this is the support, SERP will hire a, two literacy coaches to support and monitor the initiative. And so, we're excited about it pending the approval of it. And we feel that we'll have great promise in our middle schools.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
I have a couple of them. I noticed that MDRC, the Manpower Demonstration Research Cooperation, will be conducting the evaluation. Are they paid from these funds? Are they doing this of their own free will? Does SERP hire them and pay them to do this?
Right, they're hired from SERP, yes, sir.
So, out of what SERP has paid? And I noticed on the budget information, it's a significantly larger grant than what is going to this study. Is the rest of that money associated with JPS?
Okay, great question, Dr. Luckett. So, there are other cities, urban districts that are partnering with the United States Department of Education with this grant. And JPS is the district in Mississippi that SERP sought out.
Thank you.
Through MDE.
Dr. Merritt, given there is so much activity going on in the district around our own, around the CAP report, of course, and around our own recognition that our teachers and staff need additional support in the area of curriculum and instruction. The old classroom teacher in me remembers those days when you have so much going on, pulling out your folk to do different things. And I, this is a great project. Can you talk a little bit about how this work will be aligned with the other work we're doing? Because I think it's important for our community to understand that we are making a very significant effort to align all of our resources and our help.
Yes, ma'am. So, this, of course, supports and is in line with our instructional management system, which is standard twenty, as well as when we start talking about students who need support with interventions, it supports standard twenty point one, one and two in the multi-tiered support process. So, with this, teachers will be identified in the buildings. They will receive significant training that has been scheduled for three days in July. And they will have ongoing professional development to support them in the process. The area superintendents have been at the table. And so, we, every step of the way, we feel there's a very workable solution where it will not be a burden, but enhance. And it's an innovative way to really get to an end goal that we want, which is increasing our students' reading levels, specifically across the board, but definitely in middle school.
And I anticipate the district is already planning for its summer curriculum work. You're, you're keeping all these balls juggling all to fall in the same place.
Yes, ma'am. As with the directions I've receiving from Dr. Murray, as well as working with the assistant superintendents, we are putting into place the work to occur for the summer for curriculum, as well as teacher training. We met last week and we identified the last two weeks of July as being, typically, that's when we do administrative training, but not only administrators this year, teacher and administrators, as well as those para-professionals. We are going to offer training with them because there are funds for them, where we can compensate them in participating in professional development opportunities this summer. So, we want to make sure that all of our staff are well-equipped and they are well-trained to receive our students so that we can have an impactful instructional year next year.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions or comments?
It's also my understanding that the Mississippi Department of Education recommended the district being a part of this initiative.
Yes, they approached us. Yes, sir. And with that came an additional responsibility. This, the State Department has a, a middle school task force. And so, I am a part of that, as well as Dr. Principal Ed Blackburn Nelson, who represents the Middle School State Level Conference on that committee as well. And so, it's, it's an interesting and a very welcome experience.
This is a three-year project, right? Will we get any kind of interim report or status report?
Right, and of course, one thing with our universal screening process that we have in place, we will be able to monitor the data as well to see at the, definitely the middle of the year and the spring, or fall and spring, we will be able to see the impact that the study or the project is having on our students.
Thank you so much for the attention to detail.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and I got a couple more questions, Dr. Merritt. Very simple, sorry. The students who are selected through the lottery for classes, is that, will they be pulled from their traditional instruction time to go to these classes? Or is this an addition to the school day? When do these classes happen?
This will be their, their, well, it will be a class that's scheduled.
Okay.
Right.
So, it will be part of their instructional time. And I assume at some point, it does say that the impact will be evaluated for students, that the impact will have to be evaluated with testing. And maybe I shouldn't assume that. I guess I am asking, do we add to the testing of these students and what they are already facing in the year?
No, the universal screener, Dr. Merritt mentioned, will, will serve as one indicator of progress. But there may be some built into the program. Well, and with, being that these are students that are receiving support in the intervention process, we are required to progress monitor on any intervention. So, it would be, it's nothing in addition to any extra testing for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, item ten A, the MOU between SCRP and JPS is approved. Item B, approval of the grade adjustment and minimum grade policy. Attorney Nelson?
Thank you, Dr. Hairston, Dr. Murray, other members of the board. You have before you the approval of the policy IGAB, grade adjustment and minimum grade. This policy was sent out to the school community. It generated somewhat of a heated discussion about the minimum grade. The minimum grade has actually been a part of the policy at least since 2016. And the changes, the revisions are listed and read in your documents. And they are designed to comply with MDE about the grading standards, that we have to have a uniform grading policy and a conversion scale.
So, any questions or comments?
I have a question. If this policy has been implemented, or has been in existence, has it been implemented throughout the district?
It has. The, the grading policy, the minimum grade policy, the State Department and I believe the accreditation standards say that if we're going to do a minimum grade in the statute, if we're going to do a minimum grade, it has to be in policy. And so, it's actually been in policy for, at least since 2016, and it's been implemented. And I think the rationale from the previous administrations was that you just didn't want to, you know, just bar any child's chance of making a passing grade if he started off with like a sixteen or something like that.
So, are all the schools consistently using that as their bottom in terms of failing?
Yes.
It, it's interesting of the proposed changes. It seems that the only public comments we received were on the part that wasn't being proposed changed.
That's correct.
On the actual minimum grade. And frankly, I haven't heard anybody say anything positive about it who actually has to implement it. And I'm, I'm trying to find out, like, in its actual implementation, is there somebody who would argue for it? Because we haven't heard it.
Well, I would argue for it, and I'm just, just one person. Because again, when, when the policy was, was implemented several years ago, and there are districts around us, our neighboring districts, that have similar policies. If you're in the schools, there, there are, you know, there are different beliefs. There are, you know, strong beliefs that a student should be, should not be given a minimum grade. But there are students who, you know, will make a very low grade the first term. And they could basically not have a chance to pass. And so, what ends up happening as a teacher, you know, I've seen the progress that you made in second term, third term, and you can't pass, so I want to, I give you a hundred fourth term, which is not, you know, realistic as well. So, we have requests for grade changes and things like that. So, historically, that was the reason that we came, that we changed the policy. But again, it, it gives a student, and, and we always definitely want to err on the side of, of students. And for me, I think this is a beneficial policy for students because there are students who, for whatever reason, have a horrible first term. And, you know, they wake up. And, you know, we, we just think it's, it benefits students to have this policy. And, and an F is an F, I guess, the mindset of the policy.
And it may just be anecdotal evidence that's being presented to us, but it seems that the teachers we heard from, especially on the high school level, tend to think there are students who are taking advantage of that.
Yeah, and that, that's, again, there are strong opinions, again, about, about the policy. But again, when we looked at the policy several years ago, there, there are districts around us, neighboring districts, that have these policies as well for the same reasons that we do. But again.
I'd like to, like to see some more data because it, so many nuances here either way. I mean, you could make an argument to say the student worked really hard and made that fifty and his friend just blew it off, but they both know they get a fifty. It's tough. And so, so right now, with, where the policy exists, do teachers have options? Or is this, do we ask, is it uniformly used this way or?
Well, there's a, the state allows us to have a minimum grade policy. They just simply say that it has to be in policy. You just can't arbitrarily say as a district that we're going to give students no less than a fifty. It has to be in policy. And so, again, there was, you know, again, I was, I was kind of at the table when we initially did it. And the reason was because we, so many students were receiving failing grades and we were getting bombarded with requests to change grades, which is problematic. So, again, that, that was the reason. We saw the data when we changed it, that we were having so many problems. And teachers, the same teachers were requesting, again, to have grades changed at the last minute because, you know, the student had done so well the second, third. But again, we, again, we can provide data for you. Did you want to speak to something?
And that problem has been alleviated by this policy of the request for grade changes.
Yes, but, but, can you, Dr. Griffith, I'm sorry.
What was your question?
The, this, the problem of teachers requesting grade changes in abundance has been alleviated by the minimum grade policy.
Well, again, I don't think we've, we've taken a look at that. I wouldn't, you know, want to say that without having, actually looking at the data, but I would venture to say that it has. But, Dr. Griffith, speak to that. Because she handles grade changes requests.
Good evening again, board. The way that the, the minimum grade operates is that it is standard set in the system. So, our student information system, which is SAMs, all of that is automatically programmed in. So, no, it's not arbitrarily done. It, the system. It, um, the system, uh, once you post, once we post grade books to generate report cards, that process happens automatically. So, um, and there is data, so we can pull the, the statistics behind how many kids are receiving that 50 because they had a lower average versus that student actually earning that 50. So we can, you know, provide the system will allow that to occur. Um, as far as grade changes, the, the grade change issues, we had to change the policy to coincide with what the state requires. So we have that elaborate process now by which no one can change a grade but a teacher. Um, and so the, the number of requests that we have received has gone down. The requests that I'm receiving this year are generally related to credit recovery, where we're going back in, they've recovered those credits, so they're going through the grade change process. But just arbitrarily changing grades or requesting in a child's senior year to, you know, to change grades, the grade changes now are occurring, and they will have an impact on our overall graduation rate.
I, for one, would think that that information, that data would be helpful for the policy committee and for the rest of the board as we consider policy changes. I'm actually not opposed to the proposals here, but I do want the policy committee and the board to take under consideration seriously about whether or not we keep this minimum grade policy, just based on the feedback we've received since...
And, and parents and teachers?
I have a question. Um, have we looked to see if, um, if the gra, the minimum grade change violates any laws, um, with, in regards to influencing a teacher's change of grade?
Now, the minimum grade change doesn't influence a teacher to change a grade. That child in the grade book, it's still going to show me, for example, if that child has earned a 16. So if a parent looks in active parent, it's going to show that my child earned a 16. The, the minimum grade is just what the minimum the district will allow to print on the report card for reporting purposes. But that, the parents are always aware of their current average.
And no individual has made any change to the grade? It's a system change?
It's a system. The, the system, central access manages our system. We program it during the summer, that's what we work on. We program and put the minimum grade in, and it automatically calculates every nine weeks. So it's not a human touching a teacher's grade book at any point. The system does all the calculations.
So is a teacher able to put in a grade lower than 50?
They are. So the actual grade book is going to reflect the lower grade, but when we hit post to do the report card process, it, then that's where the 50 occurs.
So how does the parent find out?
Through active parent.
That's a online system?
Yes, that's our online monitoring system.
If they only get the report card, then they're not necessarily aware of the grade that their child earned.
Correct. We have encouraged our parents to sign up for active parent. We've had active parent in the district now for about three years. Um, since I've come to the department, we've had some type of monitoring tool available for parents to check the academic progress of their students. And so it is a challenge, but, um, active parent is accessible from a computer, from a cell phone. Um, but we do encourage schools to print, they can print progress reports at any time. We have a midpoint for each nine weeks. And then in some of our elementary schools, they do print weekly progress reports. And you can print it to show current average versus running average. So there are options available at the school level to make parents aware that their child is, um, missing the mark, so to speak.
What's the, uh, data, excuse me, on the use of the active parent? How many of our parents are active and using that system to find out their child is actually not doing well?
It could be better.
So we don't have data on usage?
We have data. I can tell you how many accounts we have, and so we can get that to you to let you know, you know, by school, which accounts we have, which accounts have actually been logged into. Um, but it is for a district our size of roughly 24,000 students, it is going to be logged for that population.
I'd just like to see what it is, cause that's something that needs to be addressed.
Is that the same system where parents can go on it and, and see where the child's grades, you know, all through the semester?
Correct, that's it. They can monitor, they can monitor attendance, behavior, and grades in that one system.
Right, and they can do all of that.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Which grade is actually calculated into the final average? The 50 or the 16?
The 50. If we were to print a transcript or cume label, that 50 is what's going to print for a high school. For, you know, elementary is 60.
Minimum grades have been around a long time. As I reflect on my years of working in the system, you know, men...
Was it automated?
Minimum, minimum grades have been around for a long time. It has its positives, you know, there are so many reasons as to why students don't achieve, you know, so many, many reasons that I could go into, you know. And I think, working as a teacher, we have to be student-centered. We have to make sure that we understand what's going on with the students. Because, you know, they don't have the same kind of thing that our students have, you know, at their disposal. So, you know, I think we could do more harm, we'd end up sending them on out into left field even more so. I think so. I, I think minimum grade should be kept.
I, I do agree with Dr. Harrison. Um, there are several pros and cons to minimum grade changes. Um, well, no, I'm sorry, not changes, but minimum grades. But as we prepare our students to be college-ready, we don't change, I mean, higher ed, colleges do not do minimum grade change. If you make a 16, that 16 is calculated into your, um, average. And so if we look at having our students college-ready, then, especially our high school students, and then if you have that parent that don't go back and calculate that 16 in there, then do you give a true picture of where the student is?
As Dr. Murray pointed out at the beginning, the, at the time when the, uh, 50, the floor came into play, the idea was that an F is an F. For several, but for several reasons, for example, you not having a floor places a teacher in a situation where Johnny's come to school and I've done well term two, three, and four, and either I'm going to overinflate his average to get him out, or I'm going to have to be forced to do a grade change to even bring him up. What that 50 did is if I don't put forth any additional effort, I don't pass. I'm still going to be retained. I have to work in order to balance out that 50 across the year. Just because I receive that 50 doesn't automatically mean I'm going to make it. What we also have to realize is that when you give a child a 16, we have to make sure that everything else is in place to address that child's needs. So, you know, it's kind of a two-edged sword. We have to make sure that if we deal with it in one arena, that it's going to cause some additional work and changes in others. But I will give you, you know, we'll prepare the numbers so that you can really see what it looks like. But if we didn't have it, our graduation rate at this point would tremendously suffer. The kids who are really, who have that aha moment, who really need to make it out and realize, hey, that it's bigger than just this year, we're going to sacrifice quite a few of them.
If you can show us how that would impact our graduation rate, that would be helpful too.
Okay.
And the other districts?
Other districts around us.
Yes, uh, well, uh, do we know the other, I know when we were...
We have to look them up, but I, as far as that data's concerned, Dr. Luck, but because of the way the graduation rate is calculated, you know, we can provide, let me, let me go back a little further. When, when we first initiated this, this, uh, floor grade, it had to do with dropouts as well. Uh, and that's data we probably don't have anymore. Just got to be honest with you, back when we first started dealing with it, many of us were not in the capacities that we are now, and we were collecting data a lot differently back then. But we are, we had a lead counselor in the district at the time that's no longer with us. But she would interview parents and have conversations with students about why they were dropping out, because our, our dropouts were just spiraling out of control. Uh, we were in the triple digits, almost up in the thousands with kids who were just leaving school. So the, the lead counselor at the time said, you know, what I'm hearing is students are saying that they feel like they can't make it. They look at their grades, and we pulled report cards, and they had 12s and 15s and 13s, and they just said, forget it. You know, mathematically, I can't make it, you know? And so that's why we tried to erase that option of, well, you can make it if we set this 50, cause if you don't do any better, that 50 is going to fail you just like this 16. So we started seeing students no longer being able to use the option of, you all are not giving me a chance, you know? Another issue that we had, um, when, when we started having teachers leaving in the middle of the year. You may have a, a teacher that was teaching a student for some time, and the student did not do well under that particular teacher for whatever reason. Another teacher come in and the child does well, but because of the previous teacher's scores, the child can make it. And so by putting in that floor and the child having another teacher, they did better, and they were able to pass. But because we don't change the grades without the teachers changing it, when a teacher leaves us, you know, it gets very sticky. We're trying to change the grade of a teacher that's no longer here. So it kind of, it kind of helped when we started having teachers going in and out as well. So those are some of the other issues that, that we, I just wanted to share that data with you, cause I don't know if necessarily I'd be able to find it. But I at least wanted to tell you that that's some of the issues in the beginning, uh, when that conversation came about as well. But Dr. Luck, we'll do our best to try to get some dropout, uh, data and some graduation rate data, cause even the graduation rates, the way that all of that has been calculated has changed over the years. It's not like it was when we first initiated that policy. Uh, but we'll, I'll get with my team and, and we'll see what we can do for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, this has been a very, very helpful discussion. I think what it points out to me is that we need to give our parents more support, and we need data, this is one more data wish for, of what the real capacity of our parents and families are. Because we talk about they can access it on a cell phone. Well, when I was a parent, you had to pay data charges on cell phone, and, and every, you know, it's real. So I'm concerned that we have things in place that our parents really are not able to access and use and don't understand. And so just to say they could, and they might not can afford it, if, if they ought to pay data charges. I don't know, but I just, I'm trying to keep, um, that's what I learned, that we just got to help our parents.
And also, even if we do have active parent as a communicator, where the student, where the parent can actually see that grade, it needs to be some more communication, because parents are not calculating grades. And so if they see the 50, and I'm just kind of going back to the final grade, they're not calculating that 16, or they're not calculating the 50, they're looking at a final grade. And so if that's the case, if we decide to approve the minimum grade, um, policy, then there definitely needs some communication to, so that parents can actually see where their students are.
And that is happening. Our principals do schedule those parent-teacher conferences. Our area suits can speak to that better than I could. But I, I'm certain and feel very confident to say that our parents, our principals are having conferences with those parents that are not, kids that are not scoring well. Because it's Dr. Griffith said, stated earlier, just because we have that floor of a 50 that shows up on the report card, is not ignored that the kid is not doing well. And that's how they end up in those intervention classes, and they get those academic tutors, and they get all of that scheduled. So it's, it doesn't go ignored just because it doesn't show up on the report card, cause the, the kid, the kid is not doing well in mathematically and reading in the classroom. So that is, I'm, I'm almost, I feel comfortable saying that that's occurred.
I would feel more comfortable if we had all the support mechanisms and created as a base for when a child fails that first exam, rather than letting a child one, finish a nine weeks with a 16. Uh, cause an F is not an F. You know, if I work really, really hard, and I get a 50, and somebody makes five zeros, and they get a 52, I'm not going to be too happy about that as a student. And I'm not going to be encouraged. So I think it's, I think we need to think through this.
What, this does need to be approved. What's the time schedule you're on?
Yeah, it's, it's cap related. I mean, one, one possible, one possibility. In addition, maybe what we could do, we've got to pass the first part of it anyways. And I did have a question. If we got rid of the minimum grade tonight, would that go enforced tonight? And so, well, what I mean by that is would grades at the end of the year, if students were, if we passed this policy tonight and we got rid of the minimum grade, if students were working under the assumption of the old policy, does that mean that assumption is no longer true for the students? For this school year? Well, I don't know. That's a question that I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't know if we can really, if we'd really want to change the policy at this point without getting...
Well, no, what I'm saying, we're, we're, the, the first part of this, in terms of standardizing grades, is required, I believe, for MDE compliance.
Not when the, with the minimum grade. I don't think that we can take it out at this point, because we started the year with that expectation. It's been in our policy. So at this point, I don't, I mean, moving forward to next year, maybe?
I mean, that's what I was going to recommend, is that we approve it tonight. The policy committee can take up and maybe study more the minimum grade provision with the data that we requested, um, with, uh, additional information about the districts around us that use it. And then if we want to adjust it ahead of the incoming school year, then at that time we could do it.
Agreed.
I, I agree as well.
Well, the lawyers think that whatever way you're going to go, you should do it for an upcoming school year. Legally, board action is effective at the time that it's taken. So if you should act to change the policy in the midst of a school year, it is going to create the question of, what do you do with students who have, part of the year was under one assumption, and now the rest of the year, how does, how do you go about implementing that? I would say you would have to take, give some real serious thought to, you know, how is that going to play out, student to student across the entire district? So we would advise you that that would be a decision to be best made for an upcoming school year as opposed to in the midst of one.
And, and are you specifically, so are there implications regarding the first part of the policy to, um, become, um, align our compliance with the MDE standard?
I think the first part of the policy just does that. Just, I don't think the policy, the revisions are tied to the minimum grade.
No, that's, I understand that. So, but, so, so that, so no student would be adversely harmed or assumptions about grading if this policy is passed tonight the way it has currently been presented to us?
Correct. No student would be harmed.
Okay.
This year.
This year.
Yeah. And so, yeah, so...
I'll make that a motion that we approve the policy change as presented tonight in the agenda.
Say that again.
I, I move that we approve the policy change as presented to us tonight.
I second.
Do I see some unreadiness here? I want to make sure we're, so that means we're approving the minimum grade through the end of the school year?
And the policy committee will take up this issue of the minimum grade with the available data and bring it to the full board for discussion later.
Yeah, and we're approving the modification to the policy.
To the policy.
Right, okay. Do I hear a second?
We have one.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? We have, uh, passed the grade adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11, consent agenda items personnel, Ms. Lyons.
Good evening to Dr. Murray, Dr. Harrison, members of the board. The administration presents, um, asks for approval of staff personnel matters.
I have, um, one question related to personnel matters. It would be helpful to have some data that gives the reasons why some of these folks have left the district. Do we have that?
Yes, ma'am. We, we do exit interviews, and we do have, uh, information.
Does it be interesting, I mean, and I guess we could count number retired, number resigned, terminated, non-renewal, one year, but it would be very helpful.
Yes, ma'am.
Thinking forward, and to have the information or some summary report of exit interviews to inform our recruitment efforts.
Yes, ma'am.
And I have another question, but if other board members have questions. It, it has to do with our, our work that we're anticipating, working on over the summer regarding curriculum. But I'll yield the floor if other members have questions. But having that data would be very helpful.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm particularly interested in, um, the curriculum department and the PD department. I see that there are some changes in positions here.
Yes, we, we are requesting, I think we're requesting approval of the, um, the specialists, the subject area supervisors, um, six of them, I think.
That is correct, sir.
And that'll leave how many people in curriculum?
There'll be six in PD, I believe in six in curriculum. That is correct. Seven, seven in curriculum, I'm sorry.
Well, well, possibly ten.
Possibly ten in curriculum, okay.
Possibly ten.
So is that?
Six, six have committed.
But we have ten slots.
We, we have ten slots that we'll make available.
Tens in each?
Ten additional, no ma'am. Six, it, it was going to be seven, seven. But right now we have six that are, that are committed, um, for the PD side. And we have, uh, seven for, uh, the instructional side. But we have capacity to extend that to ten. If necessary.
And how many did we have in curriculum prior to these changes?
Sixteen.
Dr. Murray?
Yes, ma'am.
So these people, these are the ones who will be more or less working as the lead persons? And then you pull in teachers from?
Um, yes, the, the plan is to, uh, we, we're looking at functions. Uh, in the past year, our curriculum department was charged with doing professional development, job embedded support, coaching. So what we're trying to do is align functions so that, that, you know, they'll still work together at different points throughout the year. But there will be a certain segment of the, of the group that will be just, um, they'll be available for PD. That will be their function, their area. The curriculum department will, their function, their area focus would be curriculum. And of course, training for training purposes, they would have to, you know, cross sectional teams, they'll have to come together to work together throughout the year. Uh, so that's a part of that alignment. But just making sure that, uh, people have, uh, that they know what their responsibilities are and they can dedicate the work to those responsibilities. So basically just reassigning, um, those seven to the PD, uh, component.
So these are all curriculum folk who are being reassigned, reassigned to professional development?
No, no. There are sixteen, there are sixteen slot, there are sixteen slots total right now in curriculum. Okay, the plan was to, to take away two of those and it would be seven under PD, seven under curriculum. That, that was the initial proposal, uh, for the department. And again, basically reassigning seven from the curriculum department to professional development to focus on the professional development component that the curriculum department was doing, you know, at different intervals throughout the year. So curriculum department, again, there are times in the year where they had to do professional development because there was no one else to provide that support. So again, we're trying to align functions so that individuals know what their responsibilities are. So the curriculum department would have seven, PD would have seven. We do have the flexibility to expand that to ten slots if, if need be. For curriculum.
For curriculum. And have you determined who's going to do PD and who's going to do curriculum? And have, have, are there position descriptions for those and you've looked?
Yes.
Analyzed qualifications and job responsibilities?
Yes, ma'am.
Because it seems like we've been working from just grabbing folk however we could. But we, we really need to be sure that these lead folk in curriculum and or professional development.
Yes, ma'am. We, we, we've put a lot of thought and, um, and research into the, um, to this process. And we assure that the people that are in place currently, that have committed to the curriculum work can, uh, can do that work under the leadership of, uh, Dr. Armstrong. And then of course, Mr. Brown's team on the other side, you know, once those individuals are in place, uh, we're sure that they'll be, uh, poised to do the curriculum work.
I see Dr. Brown is with us back there. Have, so do you anticipate advertising for more positions?
Well, we, we've actually advertised and, and have candidates, but we've not, we've not moved because, uh, we're waiting on, um, to determine what our current curriculum folk will, will do.
That, that, that kind of speaks to, excuse me, Letitia, to my concern about, you know, our future planning, our strategic planning around how we organize the district. And I'm, and part of me feels like we're almost putting the cart before the horse given some of the discussions we've had. So I'm, I'm trying to just wrap my head around what these changes really mean on the ground as we move forward. Commitments we're making now.
Well, there, there, there's no change. The only change is the, the days. Because it, it won't be, the organizational chart has not been changed. So it would just be a reassignment of, of those individuals to the PD, um, department. So it wouldn't be, am I correct in that? Excuse me. Yes. And they were, you know, uh, they were available for the reassignment. They requested, uh, that opportunity to work on that PD side.
Other questions or comments, board members? Do I hear a motion to, um, accept the staff personnel matters?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the item has passed. Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Other business? Consideration to hold an executive session.
Will you close the meeting to consider entering into executive session?
I move that we close the meeting to consider entering into executive session.
Do I hear a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we will close for executive session. Thank you all for joining us.